Good evening. Today is October 8th, 2024. The time is now 5:31 PM. This meeting of Georgetown County Council is now being called to order. We do have a quorum presence for this particular meeting. We welcome you all here to council's meeting. Give us one minute here. If any of you desire to speak during the public comment period, please make sure that you sign the public comment listing there. There he goes. We will, after he catches his breath, we will ask Councilor Carolina to give us the invocation and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand. Good evening. Let us bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we know that you're a perfect God and you make no mistakes. We open our hearts with prayer and humility for our brothers, sisters, and innocent children that have been affected by Helene. God, we ask that you look upon the suffering souls displaced and missing due to the storm in the upstate of North and South Carolina, Tennessee, Florida, Virginia, and Georgia. I reflect on the many years as we traveled the highways to Asheville to visit our son at Christ School. We are reminded of the peace and tranquility along those highways. We could never imagine that the places we visited have now been wiped out of its natural beauty. And yet, God, while I pray for those devastated by Helene, I too pray for my family as we also experience flood damage to our property here in the North Santee Low Country. But God is a wonderful God, and we have no complaints. I speak not, no brag or boast, but I thank you because you allowed our family to enter into accommodations with all amenities needed. That is why we need to continue to do good by all mankind. In the book of Luke 12, Chapter 48, God gives us a task, "To whom much is given, much is required." Yet we remain humble and plead for you to have mercy upon the people of the upstate and all storm victims near and far. We will always have challenges, but it's our resilience that will help us overcome and persevere. Dear God, bring civility to our national election process in maintaining our democratic process. I pray for world peace, that all worlds end. Continued peace and blessings to all in our county, state, and country, in your mighty name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilor Carolina. We'll move down to the approval of our agenda. You all have received it and reviewed it. Is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda as published?
So moved.
It's moved by Councilor Carolina. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Elliott. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Agenda is approved as presented. We will move on down to our special reports and presentations. Our nonprofit spotlight tonight is going to be this evening, rather, it's going to be the Nature Conservancy. And we have Dr. Liz Fly, the director.
Good evening. Good evening, yes. Thank you so much for allowing me to highlight a little bit of the work that the Nature Conservancy does here in Georgetown County in South Carolina. My name is Dr. Liz Fly. I'm the Director of Resilience and Ocean Conservation for the South Carolina chapter of the Nature Conservancy. Next slide, please. The Nature Conservancy is a global environmental nonprofit. We are science-based. We are based in over 80 countries across the world and in all 50 states. We do have a strong presence here in South Carolina. We've been in South Carolina for 55 years now. And actually, if you go to the next slide, just some statistics of some of the work that we've done over the years, both statewide and within Georgetown County specifically. Our mission is to protect the lands and waters upon which all life depends, for both people and for nature. So as you can see, we have focuses on land protection, public access of those lands, protecting our rivers and our streams for fresh water and drinking water. And a little bit more detail I'll go into are our living shorelines, so thinking about our coastal resilience, erosion, storm surge, and flooding issues, which I know Georgetown County knows a lot about. Next slide, please. So I'm going to give you just a couple examples of work we have going on right now in Georgetown County. This is the Boyd Living Shoreline you may be familiar with. This is down at Morgan Park, adjacent to East Bay Park. And as you can see from this image, there's a significant erosion happening at this area. It's a little hard to see on the screen, but the blue line up there was the shoreline in 2005. And then you can see how it's eroded back to present-day conditions. And even from the last storm, Hurricane Helene, we have more trees down in that area that are being eroded as the beach erodes away. So the city of Georgetown has been a really fantastic partner in helping us design and implement this living shoreline that will help stop the erosion of this beach. It's a really exciting pilot project and that we're using a lot of different material in the state that have been used elsewhere, a lot of woody material, based on the natural conditions of that shoreline to be able to help that shoreline stabilize and re-establish itself. Our partners also have been Robinson Design Engineers and Moffett and Nickel on this. Next slide, please. These are the materials you may see going in there. Farthest out, there are breakwaters, which you'll see being installed right now. And then behind those are these structures we call manufactured wire reefs. And they will help also accrete the sediment. And then on the shoreline will be fencing on the edging called waddle fencing. And all of this is meant to really trap that sediment as it washes in. Next slide, please. So these are just a couple shots of what's happening out there. Literally as we speak, construction is underway. There are signs out there now to help the public understand what is happening. So please go out there and visit that. And next slide. What is very exciting is that the project is only about 50% constructed, but it's already working. So the image on your left are those manufactured wire reefs placed before Hurricane Helene. And you can see after Hurricane Helene, they are covered in sediment. So we're already trapping sediment and reversing the erosion on the shoreline, which is very exciting. Next slide. Another project that we will have happening in Georgetown County soon is called a Living Shoreline Community Assistance Program. So there are many community members that may be interested in installing these types of shorelines on their properties, which are better than a seawall and that they're more natural and they stop the erosion. But they don't have the technical or the financial resources to do so. So we'll be launching an application process likely in the spring of 2025, particularly focused on underserved, underrepresented, or marginalized communities that are interested in installing living shorelines that will be able to provide that technical and financial assistance. So what I'm asking from you all is we will be recruiting what we're calling community ambassadors to help us develop an equitable application process for this living shoreline process. These members will be receiving stipends for their time for us. And then once the program is launched, we'd love you to help us spread the word. And last slide, or second to last slide. We are also hosting a training on local policy and ordinances that incentivize nature-based solutions. This will be held November 7th in the Charleston area. But if you're interested, I can give you more information on that. And we also hopefully will be hosting one in Georgetown, maybe in the spring, so a more local training. But if you're very interested, you could attend this one. November 7th, registration is open. And I think that's my last slide. So thank you very much for the time and hearing about the Nature Conservancy. Appreciate it.
Dr. Fly, who of the protected areas that you have in Georgetown County, is there someone that goes out and checks to make sure that those areas are in compliance?
Yes, there is. So all protected, well, protected areas that have easements on them, easements that we own, hold, we go out and do yearly monitoring on all of those properties. So pretty much all protected properties have monitoring on them annually for compliance.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Dr. Fly, I had a couple of questions. Number one, I was amazed at the erosion down there on the point. What's the root cause of that?
It's a really active, strong area with boat wakes and just the fetch and the wind, what the confluence of those rivers. It's just kind of the perfect combination of high wave energy that's just eating away at that shoreline.
Well, why has that just happened in the near future, or the near history, rather than, you know, I've been here 25 years and that hasn't been like that for 25 years?
I think it's likely the number of storms we've had in the last decade or so that's really, you know, caused a lot more high energy in that area. And I would say probably it's one of those things where once you hit a tipping point or a threshold of erosion on that beach, then it's just like, once you lose a certain amount of vegetation, it's just bare sand that's going to wash away. So probably hit a tipping point maybe 15 years ago and is very vulnerable to erosion now.
So this is a test case you're doing here?
It is.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm going to switch yours here. Our Office of Resilience, the state office, are you working with those folks?
Yes, we are. We work closely with them.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Dr. Fly, on your application process for 2025, I think the slide said, can you work with our PIO to put that out into the public realm when those applicate, when that date comes around?
That would be wonderful. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions for Dr. Fly? Thank you for all you do. Thank you for being with us this evening.
Great, thank you for your time.
Have a good evening. We move down to our proclamation number 24-32, proclaiming October 2024 as fire prevention month. Mr. Ellis, Director of Emergency Services.
Good evening, Chairman Morant, members of council. As you mentioned, I'm here for proclamation 2432, recognizing this week is Fire Prevention Week in Georgetown County. I'm going to forego the entire proclamation because it's rather lengthy, so I'll just summarize. But this year's theme is smoke alarms. Make them work for you. And our staff will be focusing their education efforts with the public on the importance of having working smoke alarms in their homes. Throughout the week, we'll stress the importance of installing smoke alarms in the various locations in your home, testing your smoke alarms at least once a month, and then replacing your smoke alarms every 10 years. Our fire prevention efforts are a pretty collaborative effort, not just with our agencies, with Georgetown County Fire EMS and Midway Fire Rescue, but also our partner Fire Suppression Agencies, Andrews Fire Department, City of Georgetown Fire Department, and Merle's only Garden City Fire Department. They all strive and work very hard to make our communities a safer place to live and visit. So with that, we request your consideration for this proclamation.
Thank you. Any questions from council for Mr. Ellis? Hearing then, is there a motion pertaining to proclamation number 24-32?
So moved.
It's moved by Councilor McCallum. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Newton. Any discussion? All in favor for the adoption, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Proclamation number 24-32 is adopted.
Did you take your suit? Did you pack? Lewis couldn't wear no gray suit. He looked like a ghost then.
to proclaim October 16th, 2024, as Georgetown County Chamber of Commerce Day Appreciation Day. Ms. Sierra.
Mr. Chairman, Georgetown County would like to recognize the Chamber of Commerce and their efforts to advocate for business interests, provide resources and training, and foster community development with proclamation number 2434, proclaiming October 16th as Georgetown County Chamber of Commerce Appreciation Day.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Sierra from council? Is there a motion for adoption of proclamation number 24-34?
So moved.
Moved by Councilor Carolina. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Is there a representative from the chamber to receive the proclamation? We'll move on down to item 4D on our agenda. Georgetown County Broadband Update from HTC. Ms. Benoit.
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, council. My name is Sarah Benoit. I am the Director of Public Affairs for HTC. With me tonight is Erin Reese, our Strategic Account Advisor, and Von Todd, our Chief Executive of Corporate Strategy. We're thrilled to be here again. I believe it's been almost two years since I provided our last update, and we've been hard at work. So to get us started, I'd like to begin with, back to where we started in 2019. When, before the start of the pandemic, 27% of the rural households in Georgetown County lacked access to broadband. So if you look at this map, the darker blue areas in the middle represent a coax or cable network, which still counts as broadband that's capable of delivering gigabit speeds. The black areas represent fiber. That's the gold standard when it comes to broadband. But all the other colors on this map, the teal, the pinks, the tans, and the orange, those were the areas that did not have access to broadband at the start of the pandemic. And I think we all know how the pandemic showed just how important access to broadband is for our communities. So back in 2019, we, HTC, made the commitment to Administrator Christian, to all of you, to our state delegation, to work together to bridge- in less than five years. And we've done that using $25 million worth of grant projects. That's a combination of federal funds, state funds, HTC funding, and even your own local funding. One of those many projects that we've completed as soon as April of this year was delivering broadband to Sandy Island. That was certainly a very innovative, unique, and challenging project that would not have been possible without your support and without the logistical support of your county staff. So that's one we're very proud of and thankful for your support again. So you'll see on that map, there's still a few pink and a few tan areas left. So what's next for Georgetown? We've recently secured two additional grants through the Capital Projects Fund and the ARPA 3.0 Fund. Those are both state grant programs to help us reach the remaining 400 locations in Georgetown County. We've already started construction on those projects, and those will be complete within two years. And once we complete this work, we will have bridged the broadband gap in Georgetown County. That is tremendous progress. Some might even say that's transformational project, progress. And this truly would not be possible without your support, without your staff support, our state delegation, all levels of government. This is a really unique partnership that we've had over the past few years. So we appreciate your patience and your persistence and your support as we've worked through this. So moving forward, our focus will shift to digital literacy efforts, increasing adoption rates, and increasing our presence throughout this community. We are here to stay. We are proud to be part of this community, and we are grateful to be part of this community. So again, thank you for having us, and thank you for your partnership in this effort. I'll take any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Ms. Benoit. Any questions from council or comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Benoit, good to see you again. It's been a while.
You too.
I'm amazed at what you guys have gotten done in the last two years.
Thank you.
Have you had much feedback from the outlying areas that we were having such a trouble in?
I think the feedback we've gotten for those that we've been able to connect has been positive. Even the subscription rates, the people that have signed up for service, we're very happy with that in the rural areas. So that, I think, is a testament to how much residents wanted and needed that service. The number of calls for service have gone down. And like we said, we've only got about 400 locations left to go. So overall, positive feedback.
Thank you so much for your hard work and due diligence.
Thank you for your support and your patience along the way. I appreciate it. I was saying earlier, I haven't received calls in a long time, and I think that's a good thing.
I was just thinking that, sitting up here when I saw you out there, I said, "Dale", I said, "I had got a call in quite a while on phones."
That's right. That's a good thing, for sure.
Mr. Chairman, I had a question.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. With these expansions, are you going directly to fiber optics, or are you sticking with coax?
We are going with fiber optics.
Okay, so no more coax and?
No, sir. Everything we do now with new construction is fiber.
All right. Thank you so much.
Yes.
I've got a quick question, too. Can you put the slide up that had, I don't know who's, back to slide deck real quick? The one, go back one more, that one. On the, on the neck, it's all blue, so that's cable light. Yeah, thank you. There's no fiber? Or is it just not lit? What's?
That is, Von Kerkman, if I'm wrong, that is another provider's area mostly, right? So that is coax cable. That's still capable of gigabit speeds. We have transmission fiber through that area. But yes, that is still considered broadband, high-speed internet in the neck.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any additional comments or questions for Ms. Benoit from council?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, HTC, for bringing the rural areas back into the world, really. Thank you all. We move on down to our public comments. A public comment period is included on each meeting agenda and shall be limited to 30 minutes. Each speaker will be limited to no more than three minutes. No speaker may yield his or her a lot of time to another speaker. Members of the public who wish to address council during the public input period should sign up with a clerk of council before the meeting is called to order. Please note, we do have a timer on the screen, and once the timer expires, we ask you to conclude your comments. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone sign up for other comments this evening?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have five speakers signed up. And as you stated, each will have up to three minutes to speak. Our first one is Kennedy Johnson.
Good evening, Chairman Moran, Vice Chairman Johnson, other board, county council board members. My name is Kennedy Johnson. The members of the community.
Would you please stand?
Thank you. Have asked me to respond to voice and concerns on the request of Mr. Thompson to rezone the partial property at 79414 Brown Street Road from VR10 to Village, from VR10 Village Residential to GC General Commercial. We ask that the county council accept the recommendation from the planning commission. The planning commission recommendation was not to, not to rezone to general commercial area. One of the reasons that was stated was because it was surrounded by homes, residential homes. For example, if you stand in front of the property, to your left, you have Mr. Quick family. To the right, you have the home, the Washington family. You go to the rear of the property, you have Mr. Benny and his family. By the way, Mr. Benny has horses, and concern is that with the commercial buildings and lighting and the noise, you may affect those horses, especially the lighting at nighttime. In the front, you have Ms. Jones, which is across Highway 51. So as you can see, the proposed business is right surrounded by residential area, VR10. The concerns is high-pitched noise from boat motors, sanding, banding, banding, drilling, and security lights around the property. Security lights may interfere or harm, or not harm, but being in public sites, then the neighbors would not be able to sleep pretty much at night because you got lights all around. Safety concerns, just a reminder, a few years ago, unfortunately on Highway 51, there was a bus and SUV collided. Unfortunately, three people lost their lives then. Not saying this would happen, but that accident happened point two miles away from where this proposed commercial building is gonna be. Point two miles. With the building of that commercial building, we are concerned with traffic, more traffic. In conclusion, the community is totally, totally against rezoning of this property from VR10 Residential to General Commercial. Please let us keep our village the way it was intended, VR10, which is Village Residential. Thank you.
Louis Herman?
My name is Louis Herman. I see I don't Johnson highway. I mean, I have a problem with, I got a cabinet manufacturer, she um, by my house, and it was his building number 120, 175 to 200 feet from my window, my bedroom. He work all night, you know, all day. And I don't know how to get any sleep for about the third night, and the body be so tired, you know, automatically fall asleep. And then change from this area 10. And I don't know why, I went to the planning board, they say you gotta give him some time, no, got him given like six weeks to quit doing it. He's still doing it. And seem like the county council was a joke, called had problem about 15 years ago. There's one lady but on heaven I had that problem. She said, "No, over there", and she know all about it. And it was forest under forest and agriculture. Now, he break the law, he went and changed, see one of his own use. Once he get him built, he turn in the cabinet shop, cabinet manufacturer. And I went back out doing, and I had a lawyer, told him about it. And I got most all of my record, what county council done wrong. And they wouldn't fuse, shut him down. They will change his zone for already 10. So he could get in there, I said, "I ain't never heard you could do that, change it already 10." And I don't see no difference from forest cause on, and it under forest. And I said, "Well", and they changed the law so he can grandfather him in. And then I said, "He couldn't do that." Then I had to get a lawyer, had to sue the county. It's prove that I'm right. County is the law, county make law, county change law. And they find a way to get him in. And that's why I say county council was a joke unless you got favor for certain people. And anyway, I can't hardly sleep at night. Anyway, which I don't work anymore, cause I'm retired. And anyway, when night come, I wanna go to sleep. And I went to county council, find him a problem, why didn't come chat, wouldn't shut him down. They came, I said, "I ain't hear no noise about he's, we done playing the board." And I got a, I forgot the name of the kind of saw, they make a lot of noise. If you ever been to a sawmill, saw is lomo, you know, it's that kind of noise it make. And I don't feel like he got a cabinet shop in area 10 and doing what he doing. And county wouldn't force the law the last time, and I had to sue him, and sue all of them. And I don't know what y'all would do. If y'all don't do anything, then I have to carry y'all back to court again.
Monica Maylin?
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Monica Wayland, and I'm a staff attorney at the South Carolina Environmental Law Project. And I'm here to talk about the natural resources element. We sent multiple letters to council on behalf of the Coastal Conservation League, and our position remains the same. The South Carolina Comprehensive Planning Enabling Act says that all planning elements must be an expression of the planning commission recommendations to the appropriate governing bodies. Today's agenda packet had two drafts of the natural resources element. One was the 2022 version that was recommended by the planning commission, and the other is a draft with revisions done by county staff and council. The extent of strikes and inserts in the revised draft creates something that is no longer the planning commission's original recommendations. We urge the council to proceed only using the 2022 version, that is the version of the natural resources element that the planning commission has not only recommended two years ago, but also this past September 19. Thank you.
Dwayne Draper?
Good evening, council. Dwayne Draper with Keep It Green. The long-delayed and revised natural resources element is on your agenda for third reading tonight improperly. As you all know, the planning commission, as its, as is its exclusive duty, considered many drafts of this element, finally approving Draft Six in November of 2022, sending it on to county council for three readings. Before the council took any action on this element, revisions were made to the goals and objectives by county staff improperly, without the public's due process and reviewing and holding public hearings. The element was finally tabled in July 2023 until the land use element was completed and utilized to be in conformance with the natural resources element. When the land use element was finally approved a year later in July 2024, the natural resources element was taken off the table by county council, and was taken up again by the planning commission at their September 2024 meeting last month. With one minor change, the commission approved the same Draft Six document, which superseded the previous approval in November 2022. Therefore, this newly revised element, not the one with backroom revisions by county staff, should be on your agenda for first reading, which is the proper procedural process. Appearing on tonight's agenda as third reading is both confusing and improper. It would appear that the goal is just to push this thing across the finish line without any input from the public on the changes. Staff revisions never saw the light of day in terms of holding a public hearing and providing the proper due process. At best, this seems to be employing some sort of circular logic intended to deflect or confuse the public's attention. What started out over two years ago is a very collaborative process of running the natural resources element with input from a variety of community stakeholders, has turned into a quagmire of improper procedure with a rambling timeline causing more confusion than is necessary. Please do the right thing and take up the planning commission's recommendation from their September 2024 meeting through the normal three readings before council. Thank you.
Cindy Person?
Good evening. My name is Cindy Person. I am speaking as attorney for citizens and citizens groups about the NRE. And I don't necessarily want to repeat what Monica and Dwayne had to say, but essentially, what planning commission did last month eliminates the quagmire of bizarre procedures that happened up to that point. It's our position that the NRE should be on your agenda as first reading this evening in the form that was recommended by planning commission on September 19 without revisions. On November 17 of 2022, planning commission unanimously approved Draft Six. It was subsequently sent to council before council ever considered it in the form that it was sent by planning commission. All these unauthorized and procedurally improper revisions appeared. On July 25, 2023, the NRE was tabled by council because the land use element had not yet been completed. After the land use element was completed and approved in July of this year, planning commission properly, at its September 19 meeting, reconsidered the Draft Six, along with all of the proposed revisions, and voted unanimously to recommend Draft Six with one minor change, and specifically without the proposed revisions. The Enabling Act gives the planning commission this exclusive authority and responsibility, so this action supersedes the previous version recommended by planning commission. Notwithstanding that, on your agenda this evening, you have the NRE, along with the unauthorized revisions, as third reading. There's no authority under the Enabling Act for council to consider backroom revisions to the NRE that have not been recommended by planning commission, and there's no authority for this to be third reading under any scenario. We understand this evening, planning department may suggest that council remand this back to planning commission to once again consider the very same revisions they just considered last month. We believe this is not proper because the planning commission's September recommend, or excuse me, yeah, September recommendation has rendered moot the November 2022 recommendation. This is important, and we would urge you to please take this off the agenda tonight as third reading and put it back on the agenda as first reading without revisions. Thank you.
That was our final speaker.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We move on down to our consent agenda. Please note that three matters on the consent agenda were previously approved via the agenda approval process. That's for
yeah, September recommendation has rendered moot the November 2022 recommendation. This is important, and we would urge you to please take this off the agenda tonight as third reading and put it back on the agenda as first reading without revisions. Thank you.
That was our final speaker.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We move on down to our consent agenda. Please note that three matters on the consent agenda were previously approved via the agenda approval process. That's procurement number 24-056, procurement number 24-084, and license agreement with Tumak LLC to operate as airport FPL. We move to our resolution of proclamations. Proclamation number 24-33 to proclaim October 2024 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Georgetown County. Ms. Sierra.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Breast Cancer Awareness Month is recognized worldwide with numerous organizations participating in events like walks, runs, and seminars. Staff requests council pass this proclamation to help Georgetown County raise awareness and support those in and around our community that are struggling from this disease.
Thank you, Ms. Sierra. Any questions for Ms. Sierra from council? Hearing, and is there a motion for adoption of a resolution, a proclamation number 24-33?
No.
It's moved by Council Johnson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Carolina, any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We move down to resolution number 24-35. It'll be Ms. Madam Administrator, Ms. Richardson.
Good evening. We have been notified from the South Carolina Department of Resilience to receive a grant of $1.9 million for a drainage project. This is a turnkey project. The county, by the passing of this resolution, will be responsible for the future maintenance at the completion of this project.
Thank you, Madam Administrator. Any questions from council floor?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Anderson.
Do we have any, this is going to be a design-build thing by the Office of Resilience.
Yes.
And do we have any idea when they're going to start the engineering portion of this?
No, they, I did ask them that question. They said they would start after we sent the resolution. They did not give me a specific date.
Can we keep, I'm just curious to see where, you know, how this goes.
Yes.
So if you can keep me abreast of that, I'd appreciate it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Madam Administrator, are there any other areas in Georgetown County that would have the same or comparable? Everything's fine that Grave Station received this funding. Are there other areas in this county that are prioritized to receive any sort of stormwater help, flood control mediation? Why I'm going at that is, number one, the latest event that happened in North San T of a known flood area. Are there other areas in Georgetown County that reach the level of priority to be considered, to be presented to the Office of Resilience for any sort of funds to correct the problems in these communities? Now, can you tell us the magnitude of the project? On what exactly is going to be done in Grave Station? Have there been any floodings in Grave Station? Number of houses damaged in Grave Station to prioritize that over other areas?
This, this particular project was the one that Department of Resilience chose for itself to take on this project. We don't know necessarily what they have considered, the fine details on the prioritization for this particular project. We hope to have the opportunity in December to hear a presentation from the Department of Resilience about projects they're doing now and projects they hope to do in the future in Georgetown County. They will have an opportunity to talk to the head of that department and their staff in December. We're going to work with council to confirm that date to hear what they consider their priorities.
Okay. Yes, I hope that comes as soon as possible.
Yes.
Because, you know, they're there in Columbia, we are here.
They're coming here.
Right, but we know the problems here right now.
Right.
And for them to come with a plan to kind of guess what's good for Georgetown County in light of what we're having in District Three, it's crucial that they, we start some sort of dialogue to try to get some sort of money and some sort of resolution for District Three.
Yes.
Flood is flood.
Right.
I mean, if, if we can identify any houses that are flooded, lands that are flooded, infrastructure problems, how many properties are being affected, and they chose it from afar, there are situations right here, right now, that are impacting on this county. So I hope we can get our application ready and direct them to projects that are needed right now.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
I have a couple of questions, Chairman. I take it most of this flood mitigation work is going to be done around state roads? Maybe some county?
I think it's some combination of both.
So we're taking up the maintenance, the future maintenance of this, even though it might be a state road?
That is correct.
And even though in the past, we were hands-off when it comes to state roads?
That is correct.
Will we have to pass an ordinance in order to allow our public's works, guys, to work on state roads? Will that be required?
Not that I know of at this point. Part of, this is at the very beginning of this particular process. So we will see as we go along whether we have to do that. They haven't even started with the designer, anything at this point.
And I take it the state would be more than welcome to let us do.
Absolutely.
As likewise, we would too. Madam Administrator, I think I can clear that up. This is going to be a turnkey design and work all done by the Office of Resilience. Yeah, I'm talking about future maintenance. Well, it's semantics.
Not really semantics. The maintenance is all on us.
To be done is what I'm speaking of.
I'll talk to you about it.
Right. And during the engineering part of this, I take it there's going to be some private land as well?
Yes.
Now, we have an ordinance in place where we can't go on and do this private work. I can't recite the ordinance. You know it better than I.
Right.
Now, is that going to be a problem with, with this?
As I understand it, they are going to get the easements for this project.
So as long as we get the easements, we can go on and do that work?
That is correct.
As long as we have the easement signed?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Madam Administrator? Madam Administrator, it's my understanding that this is a grant that's being granted to the county?
Yes.
For the Office of Resilience, and this grant is, what, $1.9 million for the improvements of flood areas within the county?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and it's benefiting the entire community in Grave Station and the adjoining community, basically?
Yes, sir.
So, and there's no matching fund for this particular grant or anything? It's just a turnkey, as Council Anderson said, without the funding there?
That's correct. There's no grant funding for this, no grant match for this particular project.
So it's a beneficial project for the county, basically, at no cost for the county other than the probable O N M after it's been completed?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Sounds like a pretty good project to me. Okay, is there a motion for adoption of resolution number 24-35?
So moved.
It's moved by Council Anderson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Johnson, any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Thanks to Madam Administrator's staff, a job well done in obtaining those funding. We move on down to our third reading of ordinances. Ordinance number 22-44, An Amendment to the Georgetown County Conference of Planned Natural Resources Element. Ms. Richardson.
Yes, sir, thank you. We've talked about this timeline before and again tonight. As you know, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on the original natural resource element back in November of 2022. They voted six to zero to recommend approval for the original document, which is included there in your packet. Subsequently, several proposed changes to the Goals and Objectives sections were also presented to council. That version is also included in your packet and dated March 21st, 2023. And again, we have continued to present you the original Planning Commission recommendation and those changes. The changes were only made to the Goals and Objectives section. The body of the document was not changed. Council held a public hearing on February 14th of 2023 on the document. And then in April 11th of 2023, the item was deferred, and it was tabled on July 25th of 2023 until the land use element was approved. As you know, the land use element was approved a year later on July 23rd. We also held a workshop on this item in August of this year, where staff presented both the Planning Commission original version and the March 1st, 2023 version, and went over the goals and objectives and the way that the natural resource element and the land use element were connected. In September, on September 19th, the Planning Commission discussed the original version and the proposed changes. They made a motion at that time to recommend to you the original version with one change, that the green space sales tax reference be taken out of the original version. At your last meeting, council made a motion to bring this item back off the table. It was tabled previously, so we need an emotion from you at the last meeting to bring this back off the table. Now that it is officially back on your agenda, staff is recommending that you officially refer this item back to the Planning Commission for their official input on the proposed revisions versus the original version. I think the, the Planning Commission, I placed it on the Planning Commission's agenda for September 19th. There was some concern that it hadn't officially been sent back to them at that time by you, that it was still actually tabled as far as council was concerned. It has now been brought back on the table. So my suggestion here is that you refer it to the Planning Commission, get their motion, which may very well be the same as it was last month, so that I can bring it back to you at a subsequent meeting. And Mr. Watson and I will be sure we determine the correct reading that it needs to be placed on that subsequent agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Sierra. Counselor?
I agree with Ms. Richardson. I think that it, whatever occurred at the Planning Commission September 19th, while they're, you know, appreciate their input, it was improperly before them in that procedurally it would have been because it was previously brought before this body, remained with this body, had not been brought off the table by this body, and had not been referred back to them. So the motion before you now is to refer it back to the Planning Commission. In addition to some of the staff changes, it's my understanding that different council members also had some recommended changes or at least some suggestions. So it would be good to get it back to Planning Commission, get all the changes and recommendations and ideas back into one basket, so to speak. Let Planning Commission consider them, and then refer it back up to council. And then, once they do that, Ms. Richardson, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my recollection it was at second reading when it was tabled. Is that, is that correct?
That's my understanding, Ms. Richardson.
All right, so it, it stopped with council at second reading. It's leaving council technically from second reading. So it would likely come back to council with the changes back where it had stopped first with council. The main thing is making sure there's opportunity for public input. And I can talk with Ms. Richardson about where it needs, and with clerk of council, where it needs to come on the agenda. But the main thing is to make sure there's been opportunity for public input. Sending it back to Planning Commission will provide for public input there. And then, whatever it lands back on your agenda, most likely at second, you can again have time for public comment and public hearing on it as well. So you would have two opportunities for public input.
Yes, the, the way the ordinance is set up, the comprehensive plan changes, the public hearings come before council. So we would be sure to schedule a public hearing on that document. However, it comes from the Planning Commission before council.
I've got a question for Mr. Watson. This is, this is a copy of a letter that Ms. Wallen, Ms. Wallen sent to us a month ago, or whatever the date was, and I read it. And I was shocked by what was said as far as procedure and the way we weren't following procedure. Bottom line, without getting down into the weeds, evidently, the Planning Enabling Act gives the Planning Commission the authority to make final decisions on what they, what they want in these, in these, in these elements. And it comes to us just as a check and balance to either approve it the way it is, or we can send it back with a few comments. But at the end of the day, they can come back to us and say, we're not going to, we're not going to include your comments. And, and then you got a stone wall. And if you don't believe it, just read, read what's in the statutes, and you're going to find that to be the case. So I'm kind of in agreement with these folks out here who are saying that at first reading, that was based on revision six, and, and that was it. And it came to us, and well, it went through our administrator first, made changes there, and then we made changes or what we were looking for. And all of that really should never have happened. It should have come to us, and we either approved it or went, or sent it back. And as they've done now, they, they, two weeks ago, or what was, what was the holiday date on the last, when they went back, came back and said, we're going with Rev Six and one change?
September 19th.
September the 19th. Basically, they were telling us that at that point. So I tend to agree that we can, we can send it back, but it should be coming back to us as, as the review, the initial, in the initial form, as the first, first time before council. And then we can, we can make our comments and, and send it back to them, but they'll, they are probably going to come back and tell us that we're, we're not going to do that. And that's just what I've learned. And if you all read this, you're going to find out the same thing I did. Thank you.
Any further questions for Ms. Richardson or Attorney Watson from council? Thank you. Is, you've heard the request from our planning director. Is there a motion to remand ordinance number 22-44 back to the Planning Commission for review?
So moved.
It's moved by Council Elliot, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Carolina, any discussion?
I have a quick question. When it goes back to, if it goes back, and we move that it goes back to Planning Commission, and then they present, are they going to present both copies? Or are they going to be aware that some of the issues or the fact that we didn't have oversight over some of those issues?
Yes, ma'am. And that discussion happened at September 19th, and I will provide that information again. We had a report to them, which we'll also provide to you when it comes back, but tried to summarize the changes and some of the reasons why some of those were made.
Just, I just want to make sure I understand what Mr. Anderson was saying. So if you present that information to them, and they just ignore it, and then it comes back to us, let's say, just like it is right now, the revision six, whatever version it is, then we would just then vote no on that? Or what's the next step? Or how would we make amendments to it if they needed to be made?
If your question is being informed by the letter that Mr. Anderson referenced, and I think there's another letter along the same line, I disagree with the legal opinion expressed in that letter. This body is the legislative body, not the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
And any, any further discussion on that would probably be most, most appropriate in an executive session.
Okay.
Mr. Watson, would you put this in the same category as what comes first? The, the, the ordinance or the, of the plan? Are we going down that same road again with this? Similar. That's what it sounds like to me. Ordinance is law, plan is not law. This body is a legislative body. Planning Commission is not. In this case, it looks, the way I read this, the Planning Commission makes the final decision, and we can either approve what they're doing or say, you know, we've got some we've got some things we'd like you to look at, and they can look at them, and they may decide to put some of them into, into the text, but they may say, what you see is what you get. That's, that's my point with this, if I hadn't made myself clear before.
That's what I'm confused about, that they present something back to us that we don't agree with, that says in a circular, nothing ever gets approved.
No, I, I, I don't think that's what you're looking at.
Okay.
We have, we have the result from Counsel, from Attorney Watson, saying we have a motion on the floor. We have a first and a second motion. Let's move forward with the motion. All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. It's remanded back to Planning, Planning Commission. We move on down to ordinance number 24-48, the amendment of the fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget ordinance. Ms. Langston?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, County Council. This is ordinance number 24-48, commonly known as the rollover ordinance. It allows for funds allocated for projects and purchases budgeted in fiscal year 24 to, but not yet completed, be rolled over into fiscal year 25 for their completion. We're rolling over approximately $11.3 million, and nothing has changed on this ordinance since you heard, looked at it at second reading. So staff asks that you give third reading approval to ordinance number 24-48.
Thank you, Ms. Langston. Any questions for Ms. Langston from council?
Yes, one, one question.
Okay.
11.3 million rollover. By the time we get to this, is inflation built into this number, or do we run short on some projects? What's the, what's the accounting behind this?
No, we won't roll short. The majority of these projects have purchase orders issued on them, so we've already entered into a contract with the vendor or whoever's providing the, the equipment or project, and so, no, they're, they can't change that at this point.
Good, good answer.
Thank you.
So basically, we're just, we're rolling over the money that we already spent?
We haven't really already spent it. We've already promised it, basically, or committed to, to spend it. The project or the purchase just didn't complete it by June 30 of '24, so now it's going to complete. A lot of these that are on the list have actually already been completed or purchased. We just have to make the funds available. We've paid for them. We just have to, it's an accounting thing.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for Ms. Langston? You've heard the recommendations, Ms. Langston. Is there a motion for approval of Mrs. Langston, Ms. Langston's recommendation?
So moved.
It's moved by Counsel Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Elliott. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We move on down to our first reading of ordinances. The following ordinance would be read into the record for first reading by title only. Please note that council will not be taking any action on any of these particular ordinances this evening. Ordinance number 24-51, three zone, one parcel totaling approximately 2.92 acres, located at 7914 Brownsbury Road, identified as TMS number 02-0405-022-06-00, from Village 10,000 Square Feet Residential via our 10 to General Commercial, G.C. Ordinance number 24-52, three zone, one parcel totaling approximately 84.31 acres, located on the west side of Brickton Road, approximately 1,000, 156 feet north of High Market Street in Georgetown, TMS number 02-0422-011-10-02, from Forest Agricultural and Limited Industrial to Limited Industrial. Ordinance number 24-53, three zone, one parcel totaling approximately 232.7 acres, located on the northern side of Penny Road, identified as TMS number 01-0437-011-00, from the Turkey Creek Resort Plan Development to Forest Agricultural. And ordinance number 24-54, an ordinance to authorize Georgetown County to lease property owned by Georgetown County and located at 605 and a half Church Street in Georgetown County, South Carolina, to the Georgetown County Alano Club. We move on down to the approval of our minutes. Our regular council meeting minutes of September 24, 2024. Can you get a motion for approval of those minutes?
So moved.
It's moved by Counsel Newton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel McCallough. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand.
Oppose?
Motion carries. Is there any further business to come before council this evening? Hearing none. Is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Moved by Counsel Carolina. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel McCallough. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? You stand adjourned.